All right, we'll get started this morning. We have an invocation from our Oklahoma City Police Department Chaplain Charlie Phillips, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman James Greiner.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us and for the opportunity to gather here as we conduct the business of our city. I just ask for a special blessing for our mayor, city officials, and this assembled council. Father, I would ask that you would graciously grant these men and women the wisdom to lead with confidence, knowing what is right and good, and the ability to work together in harmony for the good of our city. Please give them the assurance of what would please you and what would benefit all they represent. Father, I am grateful today for the support and recognition for our police department and its officers. Just ask that you would continue to watch over and protect these men and women, as well as all of our other first responders, guiding them daily as they carry out their duties, often under very dangerous and difficult circumstances. We're grateful for the blessings that you've bestowed upon our community and for those that you have called to lead and serve. And as always, Father, I would just ask that you would grant us personal peace in our lives, joy in the tasks that you provide us, and in all things that we would seek to honor you. I ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and that brings us to item three, Office of the Mayor. There are two resolutions on the agenda, but we also have some other presentations to make. It's a bit of a heavy load, so I'll try to get through it quickly. I will make my way to the front for those presentations. All right, why don't we start with Police Appreciation Month? That was the reason for the timing of our chaplain this morning, and why don't we bring up our chief and deputy chiefs? Well, this is a month that, obviously, we appreciate you every day of the year, but this is a month where we like to especially bring attention to your important work in our city, and so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas police officers make a valuable contribution to our community by serving and protecting our citizens, and whereas the dedication and desire of Oklahoma City police officers to preserve a peaceful quality of life for all citizens is their foremost goal. Whereas daily life-threatening hazards are an accepted requirement of the profession and most appreciated by a grateful public, whereas certain events within the month of May lend themselves towards the positive recognition of Oklahoma City law enforcement personnel, the city wishes to announce the following days of observance and the activities planned in recognition thereof. May 1st is National Law Day, May 3rd Oklahoma City Police Department Awards Banquet, May 10th Oklahoma City Police Memorial Service. Also on May 10th is the Oklahoma State Law Enforcement Memorial Service, May 12th through 11th is National Police Week, and May 15th National Police Officers Memorial Day. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May as Police Appreciation Month in Oklahoma City in recognition of the outstanding performance, service, and competence exhibited by the Oklahoma City police officers.
Thank you. This is Chief City as chief, your final Police Appreciation Month, and we'll have some other opportunities, I think, to say nice things about you, so let's not do all that today.[334.00][334.00](Laughter) But I certainly wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for your service, and we'd love to hear a few words from you this morning.
Thank you, Mayor. And like the mayor said, we feel appreciated every day. It's a great community to be in law enforcement. Great staff here, all the command staff, deputy chiefs, there's a lot of people, a lot of good leaders that lead this police department, that make it tick, and a lot of good officers that make it tick. I wish I saw, you know, the poo we have to deal with can't be boxed, so otherwise we'd have something token for you, but anyway, thank you for the recognition, council, mayor. We appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Is there anything that anybody up here wants to say? Police appreciation? It's okay, I know I speak for them when I say we very appreciate you very, very much, and why don't we all hear it for our police department?[387.13][387.13](Applause) Why don't we bring up our Employee of the Month? We were just discussing one of our departments. We believe strongly that across all of our departments, we have the greatest city employees in the country. And, Richard, we want to honor you today pending the passage of this resolution as our Employee of the Month, and to learn a little bit more about you, I would ask the clerk to please read.
Whereas Richard Kitchen has been a city employee for six years and is the city's energy manager working in the Office of Management and Budget in the Finance Department. Whereas Richard works as a liaison with utility providers, promotes energy efficiency in city operations, monitors energy usage in all city facilities, and implements energy efficiency programs with other departments. Richard always ensures that the city is taking advantage of available savings programs and works diligently at implementing changes to save the city money. Richard worked with the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority and OG&E to qualify the renovative work at the Sheridan-Walker parking garage for OG&E's commercial energy efficiency program that resulted in a $131,000 rebate to COPTA. Whereas Richard also directs the city's third-party natural gas program, which saves the city more than $200,000 annually on the purchase of natural gas. Richard is working with other city departments to implement a new process to automate the handling of utility bills, which will provide extensive auditing of bills through the city's energy management software and save significant processing time. Whereas Richard is hardworking and dependable and invaluable asset to the Office of Management and Budget and always has the city's best interest in mind. Whereas the council desires to recognize Richard Kitchen for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they hereby thank and commend Richard Kitchen, April 2019, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Very good. Well, why don't we, before you say anything, because you may have to, you may temper your remarks depending on how this vote goes, we want to do a motion in a second. Got a motion in a second? Let's cast our votes. Passed unanimously. You are the Employee of the Month, Richard.[566.04][566.04](Applause) We'd love to hear a few words from you.
First off, I want to thank council, mayor, and the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club for the honor to be Employee of the Month. I was surprised, but I also am humbled about it because there's thousands of us that work every day, and there's a lot of people that poured their lives and their experience into me that's helped me do, being able to do what I do every day. So specifically, I'd like to thank the budget office that is here to support me and my supervisor, Doug Dowler. Jiffy, who is a coworker that works in the Energy Management Office, he's been great support to me. And lastly, my wife is here to support me, Sharon, so thank you very much for this honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Richard and all our city employees. Why don't we bring up our Teacher of the Month, Angela? All right, we've got Angela Dormiani here, and we would love to learn a little bit more about you first, so I will ask the clerk to please read this resolution.
Whereas Angela Dormani has been named Teacher of the Month for April 2019 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Angela received her bachelor's degree from Rockhurst University in Kansas City, Missouri, graduating cum laude from the honors program, her master's degree in history from the University of Central Oklahoma in 2011, and the National Board Teacher Certification in Young Adult Social Studies in 2017. Whereas Angela is in her 17th year of teaching and joined the staff at Aztec Charter Schools in 2002. Teaching social studies, she was selected as Aztec's Middle School Teacher of the Year in 2006, the High School Teacher of the Year in 2018, and the High School Teacher of the Year finalist in 2013. Whereas at Aztec, Angela serves as head lead teacher, working closely with administration as well as grade level and department chairs, to plan and coordinate Aztec's weekly professional development meetings and works with other advanced placement teachers, administrators, and testing coordinators to assure AP courses are readily available and up to date. Angela teaches history because she wants teenagers to understand the diverse cultures, people, and institutions that have developed and kept our country going strong. It is her desire to pass on the passion to understand our past and to encourage youth to find connections between the past and their own lives. Whereas she has also had the pleasure of traveling around the world for various professional development opportunities and has incorporated her international travel experiences into her classroom, making history real and applicable to her students. Angela is a member of Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, American Historical Association, Phi Alpha Theta, National Council for History Education, Oklahoma Historical Society, Oklahoma City Museum of Art, and National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, and she takes great pride in being a deeply invested member of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Angela on her selection as the April 2019 Teacher of the Month by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Well, that's great. That's a lot, Angela.[806.63][806.63](Laughter) Well, I believe Aztec is in Ward Two?[812.56][812.56](Laughter) So, would you like, this is a resolution, would you like to make a motion? Mr. Cooper?
I would like to make a motion to move this.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. You are the Teacher of the Month.[828.63][828.63](Applause) Well, we're so incredibly grateful for our teachers, and that's why we honor them at least once a month here at council, and it sounds like you are doing wonderful things for the kids of Oklahoma City, and we're so grateful for that. Well, that's obvious. Well, we'd love for you to say a few words. When I asked you before if you would say a few words, you said, "I speak to 100 kids every day, so surely I can do this."
All right, well, thank you so much for this great honor, council members, mayor, the Rotary Club. You know, it is a great honor as a teacher to be recognized. It says a lot, and it means a lot for our city and our community members to really recognize, you know, our quality, you know, teachers in the city and the state, and we have so many great teachers. You know, it really speaks a lot to how much we care about the future of our city, you know, because our educators that are teaching your children, we love them, we dedicate so much time to them, but thank you so much, and I really want to thank my husband, who's my biggest supporter. If anyone's ever a spouse of an educator, you understand sometimes the sacrifices you have to make because it takes a lot, and, but we do it because we love your kids, so thank you again.
Thank you so much. All right, why don't we bring up our Arts Festival crew? All right, come on up here. It is, of course, as the clouds rolled in last night, we knew it meant only one thing, it's Festival of the Arts time. So, we would love to be reminded of all the wonderful things that make our Festival of the Arts special, so I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the 53rd Annual Festival of the Arts, produced by the Arts Council of Oklahoma City, will officially open on Tuesday, April 23rd, for six days of exciting visual, culinary, and performing arts activities. Festival of the Arts is recognized nationally as one of the most spectacular fine arts festivals in America, featuring more than 144 visual artists, live entertainment on three stages, delicious local food, and activities for all ages. Whereas Arts Council Oklahoma City is continuing its commitment to making Festival of the Arts a sustainable, zero landfill event by utilizing recyclable and compostable materials and promoting eco-conscious practices. Receptacles for recycling and composting will be available throughout the festival grounds. Whereas 2019 Festival of the Arts co-chairs Susan Whittington and Randy Lewis lead a team of more than 40 different committees and 5,000 volunteers who donate their time, talents, and resources to produce the Festival of the Arts. Whereas Festival of the Arts is Oklahoma City's annual rite of spring and focuses on Arts Council Oklahoma City's mission to bring the arts and the community together. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 23rd through 28th as Festival of the Arts Week in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to join in honoring Arts Council Oklahoma City, the volunteers, and the artists who take part in this event.
Thank you. Well, it is always an exciting time, and we are joined today here by the co-chairs, Susan and Randy, and Susan, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. This is the art that we chose. It's actually a collaboration of husband and wife, Julie and, Kevin, sorry, Sarkman. Sorry, I'm nervous. And it's called Born in a Day, and it's really, what's great about it is that they took all the colors of, you know, the thunder, the energy, Oklahoma energy, and they also did something about the flower, the steak flower, the Indian blanket, and what other things? Would you like to say?
The olive branch.
The olive branch, yes. So, would you like to say?
Well, you know, today is the day of the kickoff of the 53rd Annual Arts Festival. We will officially kick it off on the main stage at 11 o'clock with mayor and council, and shortly thereafter, we would invite all of you to join us with the officials' luncheon in the Hall of Mirrors afterwards. So, the festival opens today, come out and see us. There's 144 artists out there. Huh? Yes, we are actually at International Arts Festival this year. We have one from Israel joining us that happened to be in the States and saw our festival and went through the jury process and looking forward to it. 26 food vendors out there, so there's all kinds of food for everybody's flavors, so come join us.
All right, thank you. Well, let's hear it for everybody who makes this possible. Thank you so much. That's yours, Chief.[1135.65][1135.65](Applause) Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, let's bring up our monarch folks, our monarch butterfly supporters. Everybody, you made the journey down here, you might as well. I took a picture with 10 of you, come on up here. So, I assume you're the ones who put the boxes of manure in front of us. The jokes just write themselves, so I hope there's an explanation. All right, let's have the clerk read this proclamation about Monarch Month.
Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species which has captured the imagination of millions in the United States. Even though 20 years ago, more than 1 billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, the population of the monarch has dwindled by more than 90%. Whereas the decline of the monarch is due to the loss of its summer breeding habitat in the United States and its winter habitat in Mexico. Whereas Oklahoma City is located on the monarch highway, migratory path, and is critical to the future of the monarch. Whereas Oklahoma City residents can make a difference by planting native milkweed and nectar-producing plants to provide habitat for monarchs and other pollinators. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City will make a commitment to help ensure thriving population of monarchs for generations to come. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Monarch Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to plant and protect native milkweed and nectar sources in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship.
All right, well, thank you. Would you like to say a few words to further explain Monarch Month?
I would, thank you very much. Yes, so I'm representing a group called the Oklahoma Monarch and Pollinator Collaborative, otherwise known as Okies for Monarchs, and this is Katie Hawk from the Nature Conservancy who's on our steering committee, Dr. Dwight Lawson from the Executive Director of the Zoo, and Mary Waller, who's our director of the collaborative, and I also work for the zoo, but I'm on the steering committee of the Okies for Monarchs as well. So, we'd like to thank you, Mayor Holt and the city council, for supporting efforts to protect and create habitat for monarch butterflies and pollinators. Because Oklahoma City is centrally located on the monarch migration pathway, that makes Oklahoma City vitally important for ensuring that we have monarch butterflies thriving for generations to come. Pollinators play a really critical role in our ecosystem. They provide a service to us by enabling one-third of our food crops to produce fruits and seeds that we all rely on, but unfortunately, pollinator populations are declining at an alarming rate. Fortunately, there are things that we can all do, simple actions that we can take to reverse the decline. So, by planting milkweed and nectar-producing plants and stopping the use of pesticides on our lawns and gardens, we can provide much-needed habitat for our native pollinators. And so today, we are giving Mayor Holt and the city council special boxes of Zoo poo, and these include packets of pollinator seed mix so they can start their own gardens and add to citywide efforts already underway to expand pollinator habitat in our public gardens and include native plants in our public landscapes. And I encourage everyone to visit okisformonarchs.org and take the pledge and learn about the many ways that you can help.
All right, thank you. Let's thank everybody here for being a part of this.[1370.15][1370.15](Applause) All right, that concludes our presentation, so I'll make my way to the front again. All right, that fully concludes Office of the Mayor, which brings us to Journal of Council Proceedings, item four on the agenda. We can take both of those items A and B with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Request for uncontested continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, on page 17, under item 9A5, this was requested by the applicant and the neighborhood together. It's S.P.U.D. 1106, and they asked that we defer this one to May the 7th. On page 22, item 901D, and all these items I'm going to list now, we're going to strike from the agenda. Item D is 242 Southeast Grand Boulevard, that's to re-notify the owner. Item O is 314 Southwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. Under page 23, item 901Q, 3068 Southwest 37th Place, the owner has secured. On page 23, item 9P1C, 242 Southeast Grand Boulevard, to re-notify the owner, and item P, 314 Southwest 33rd Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
All right, thank you. That will be the order then. We'll go to revocable permits, item six. Item A is a revocable permit with Margarita Mamas for the Margarita Festival on May 4th, and we have someone who has signed up, maybe two people, Lydia and Terry?
Yes.
Come on up. Are you the Margarita Mamas?
Yes.
Okay.[1531.33][1531.33](Laughter) If you would, maybe those who speak might say your name and address, and that'd be great.
Yeah, we're Margarita Mamas. I'm Terry Jones, and I reside at 7444 Northwest Sixth Terrace in Oklahoma City.
And I'm Lydia Anderson, and I reside at 200 Chisholm Trail, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Anything you'd like to say about your event?
Yeah.[1560.13][1560.13](Laughter)
Go ahead.
Well, we are wanting to have our first annual Margarita Festival here in Oklahoma City. We travel in different cities, and we see that this festival is great in other surrounding areas, and we know that Oklahoma City have wine festivals, we have keys festivals, beer festivals, but we've never really had a Margarita Festival, and we wanted to bring something new to the city, to give back to the city. It will have food trucks, local bands, different activities and things like that. It is also a family-friendly event, and we want to be able to, you know, have something and bring it here. You'll be able to come out and bring your lawn chairs and enjoy just great music in the city.
Great. Of all the things on the agenda that people could have brought us, they brought us poo, but they could have brought us margaritas.[1611.01][1611.01](Laughter) Well, thank you very much for being here. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, I'm glad to hear you all are doing this. It sounds like a lot of fun, so I, do we need to move? Yes. Still getting the hang of things.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Have a great event, ladies.
Well, thank you. And I hope you guys can come out and enjoy.
All right, we've got item 6B, revocable permit with the Oklahoma City National Memorial Foundation for the 2019 Memorial Marathon Run to Remember. And do we have anyone signed up to speak? Christina Jordan Wood? Yeah, hi, come on forward, and if you wouldn't mind explaining a little bit about the marathon this year.
Hi there, my name is Jordan, my address is P.O. Box 323, Oklahoma City, and this year is our 19th Annual Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon, and I'm honored to say that through the help with numerous city departments, the Special Events Unit, the Parks Department, the Police Department, Fire Department, IMSA, so many people, we've been able to pull off changing the course of OKC for the first time ever. We've moved our finish line to Hudson and Sheridan and Myriad Gardens. We've been working really closely with them to pull off our event this year, and then with the hope in 2020, we'll be finishing in Cizer Tail Park, and that'll be our new home for the future. And so this year, we've changed a lot of our course, and a lot of it's different. We know it's not going to be completely perfect. It took us 18 years to get what we had, but we're excited. We're excited to hear the feedback from everyone who goes out there and tests the new course. So, our event is this Sunday, April 28th, starts at 6:30 a.m. We'll be doing the 168 seconds of silence for each life that was killed in the bombing to honor those, and the start line will always remain the same at the memorial, so I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have or any concerns.
Thank you. Well, we're thrilled that it's going south for the first time. I commend you for that. Any questions? If not, we could, I could take a motion from at least three different council members who have this event in their ward.
I'll just say, it is definitely going to be a run to remember now with the change of our course, so this, I think this is excellent, so I would ask that we move it for this event on Sunday.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you Sunday. Item 6C, revocable permit with OKC Public Tennis LLC to hold the 2019 Girls' State Tennis Tournament, May 3 through the 4th, and the Boys' Tournament, May 10 through the 11th. And we have Stephen Henry, perhaps?
Good morning, council. My name is Stephen Henry. I reside at 3008 Southwest 132nd Place. I direct the Will Rogers Tennis Center in Will Rogers Park. The Boys' and Girls' State Championships are held the first two Fridays, Saturdays in May with a tremendous amount of tri- in May with a tremendous amount of traffic. And our proposal is to turn Pat Murphy Drive temporarily into a one-way street moving from east to west. The street only is in the park to help flow of traffic for this large event. Any questions?
No. Councilman Cooper?
Thanks for having me. This is Will Rogers Park. It's one of my favorite places, and I'd like to move the item.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have 6D, revocable permit with Scissor Tail Community Development to hold the 2019 Cinco de Mayo. And I believe we've got Robert here to speak. Come on forward. Say your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Robert Ruiz. I'm the President of Scissor Tail Community Development Corporation. We have our office located at 302 Southwest 25th Street in the Capitahill District. And we will be holding our sixth Oklahoma City Cinco de Mayo. The celebration has actually been going on for almost 30 years. And the previous group, La Tremenda, who had been holding it in Bricktown, had joined forces with us a number of years ago to make this event even bigger. The vision for the event is to create the most official celebration of Cinco de Mayo throughout the whole United States, because as we know, Oklahoma City is the sister city of Puebla, Mexico, where the event actually comes from. So we're very excited about this year. We're expecting a crowd of thousands of people to join us. With that in mind, a minister, the Council General from Little Rock, Arkansas, will be here from Mexico in order to celebrate with us. He's been with us almost at all of these festivals. And in addition, we'll have one of the ministers from the Ministry of External Affairs and from Mexico flying in from Mexico City for this event. So we would definitely want an extensive invitation to all of you to be present as we'll have an international presence there. And in addition to that, we will also be recognizing Chief City. As we know, that will be right after his last Friday here with our city, and we're very grateful for his service. So we definitely want to recognize his service to all of Oklahoma City, and of course, in particular, the Hispanic community, which will be out in large presence that day. And we'll have a day-long of music, food, activities, and just an all-out good time from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday, May 5th.
Great, I spoke at this last year and was just amazed at the crowd. The picture that somebody took of me looking out over the crowd, it looked like Woodstock out there.
Yes, it's the Hispanic Woodstock of Oklahoma.
Councilman Stowe?
I think it's going to be another, another great event. So with that, I'll move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert.
Appreciate it.
6E, revocable right-of-way use permit with the March of Dimes Foundation to hold the March for Babies on May 4th. And do we have anyone to speak?
Good morning, my name is Tim Miller. I live at 13802 Crossing Way East in Edmund, which is in Ward 7. I am a longtime March of Dimes Board Member, and I'm here to talk about our March for Babies event. It's an annual event coming up on Saturday, May 4th. Basically, the whole event takes place the morning of the 4th. This is our single biggest fundraising event of the year, so it's very important to us. We expect about, depending on the weather, maybe 3,000 walkers. Again, it depends on what kind of weather we get, but we are expecting a lot of people to participate. The site is the Myriad Gardens. We start at the Myriad Gardens and walk about a two-and-a-half-mile route north and then come back to the Myriad Gardens. It's a very family-friendly event, as you might imagine. We have lots of activities for kids. It's, again, it's a wonderful event. As a longtime board member, I'm very proud to emphasize that 87 cents out of every dollar raised goes toward the mission of the March of Dimes. And as most of you probably know, the mission of the March of Dimes is to, actually, we lead the fight for the health of all moms and all babies. In the state of Oklahoma, of the 50,000-plus babies born every year, 5,500 are born prematurely, and of those 5,500, 1,520 last year were born with birth defects. And unfortunately, 393 babies die before their first birthday because of those, of those birth defects. So, so the mission is real. It's, you know, it's ongoing. We hope to raise in excess of $250,000 this year. Anyone who wants to get involved can go to marchforbabies.org or marchofdimes.org.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, I just want to say thank you for the work you all are doing. We know that, like you said, maternal health in Oklahoma is not great, so I appreciate what you're doing, and I move for approval.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Now, we've got Item 6F, revocable right-of-way use permit with Northeast OKC Renaissance to hold One OKC on May 18th. And have we got someone here to speak? Katana?
Yes.
Welcome. Say your name and address.
Good morning, Mayor Holt and council members. My name is Katana Stevens, 9816 Mark Trail. Sorry, my sciences are a bit, kind of taking over this morning, but I'm here representing Northeast OKC Renaissance, hosting our fourth annual One OKC. It'll be Saturday, May 18th, from 12:00 to 4:00, located on Northeast 23rd between Kellum and Hood. One OKC is a free, family-friendly event, and the idea is to highlight and celebrate the history of Northeast Oklahoma City while also highlighting and showcasing the new development that is coming to Northeast OKC, to bring out the current residents and also celebrating and bringing in the OKC metro area. We will have pop-up trucks, food trucks, pop-up vendors. Centennial Health has been a big supporter that we showcased the development last year, and they will also be involved this year. The Oklahoma City County Health Department is also a big supporter of One OKC. We'll have a lot of local entertainment, live bands, and artists, a community mural. The Gay Church is sponsoring all of our kids' activities. And when, we will also have the Alliance of Economic Development there to get input from our residents as far as any future development that is coming to Northeast Oklahoma City. So it's just a free, fun event to kind of highlight what's going on now and the future, and just to bring Oklahoma City into this area to celebrate with our current residents.
Great, always a great event. Councilwoman Nice?
Well, I must say, it gets bigger and better every year, so I know we are all excited about what's to come for this year, and they use me for free labor, so I'll be volunteering my services.
And we appreciate it.
And I'll be volunteering my services again for you on May 18th. So I encourage everyone that can be a part, just to come. Come to the community and see what's going on, and I promise you, you will leave excited, that's for sure. So with that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event. Now, that brings us to Item 6G. This is a little bit of housekeeping, another necessary permit for the marathon. We don't have to have another presentation, but I would accept a motion and a second on this. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And that brings us to 6H, revocable right-of-way use permit with the Paseo Artists Association to hold the Paseo Arts Festival, May 25th through May 27th. And we have Amanda, Colin, and Paige here to speak.
Hi, I'm Amanda Bleakley, and I reside at 7925 Lake Hurst Drive.
Colin Rosebrook, 3017 Paseo, Oklahoma City.
Paige Powell, 3022 Paseo, Oklahoma City.
And we're excited to bring you the 43rd Annual Paseo Arts Festival, which will be Memorial Day weekend, May 25th, 26th, and 27th.
We're going to be representing probably a little over 100 artists from all over the country, nationally juried, so there's lots of things for everyone to see.
We'll have 52 performers on two stages, and this year, we're adding a new stage for spoken-word acts, comedians, and we'll have the statewide winner of the Poetry Out Loud competition performing as well.
All of that was well done, by the way. Coordinated.
Any questions?
No, any questions? Councilman Cooper?
Hi.
Hi.
I haven't seen you all since I was out there knocking doors and meeting all the different historic districts in Ward 2. From the bottom of my heart, as a Paseo resident, thank you, thank you. For 43 years, I was, I've only been there for seven of them, but it's such a thrill to wake up and hear that activity. It's why I moved to the Paseo. The walkability, the access to the neighborhoods around me, and the art. And I'm just so proud to know that you all are doing that work, and if I can ever be of assistance, let me know. So with great enthusiasm, I would like to move this item.
Great, got a motion. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event, guys. Thank you.
Congratulations, too.
All right, we will now recess the council meeting. We'll convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through H, and we can take them with one motion. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A through F, which we could also take with one motion. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have Items A through C that we could take with one motion. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the City Council, where we find ourselves on Page 6, Item 7, the Consent Docket. And I know we have a presentation for Item 7K2, and I think that's it. So is there anything else that anybody else wants to pull out? Okay.
Mayor, Item 7O, 7W, and 7Y3.
7W and 7Y3?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else?
Item 7Y1.
7Y1, okay. Anybody down there? Okay. And we will then take them in order, and I also have a citizen to be heard, but taking them in order means that we will start with the presentation at 7K2 from Aubrey McDermott, I believe. Congratulations, Aubrey, on your appointment this week.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Aubrey McDermott, Planning Director. This item is both to receive a donation from the Innis-Munch Foundation for $100,000. Are we doing K1 and K2 together?
Yes.
Sorry, I was running.
That's fine. Yeah, I'm sorry, 1 and 2, really, yes.
Okay. The Innis-Munch Foundation is granting the city $100,000 for the purpose of establishing a homelessness strategy for Oklahoma City. At the same time, the mayor has also developed a Mayor's Homelessness Task Force. And the task force is going to include two council members, Councilmember Hammond and Cooper, and several different, representatives from different social service agencies. Bob Ross from the Innis-Munch Foundation, and, sorry, I'm out of breath. And Sue Anne Arnall from the Arnall Family Foundation would be co-chairing the mayor's task force. At this time, we are going to be issuing an RFP, which is Item K2, to solicit the services of a consultant to prepare the homelessness strategy. So that consultant would be working over about a nine-month timeframe with the members of the Homelessness Task Force to put together an assessment of existing conditions. What do we have? What do we need? Are there any services that are overlapping? Evaluate the effectiveness and the efficiencies of those services. We're going to be establishing some goals for our community and then strategies and initiatives to implement those goals. So this implementation plan would then come about with both short and long-term strategies to address homelessness. We need to be able to address immediate needs, but also understand what the root causes of homelessness are and have long-term strategies that all of the different partners that we work with on this issue can implement over time. We intend that we'll maintain coordination with several members of the Homelessness Task Force in some sort of a coordinated effort so that we can track the implementation of this plan. We want to be able to have benchmarks that we look at today, and then over time, measure our success as a community in helping to implement our strategy. We will report to council, have our consultants report to council, the findings of this strategy and the implementation plan moving forward at the end of the nine months, and then move on from there. Our first Mayor's Task Force meeting is tomorrow, and we'll be getting feedback from the group. We'll have several members of the task force participate in the selection process for the consultant as well. And we'll be coming back to council with the, asking for approval of the negotiation of the contract with the selected consultant. The proposals will be due on May 8th, and we expect to come back to council in June for the negotiation and then the approval of the contract.
Thank you. Yeah, we have traditionally worked from a strategy, a plan that various community groups have agreed upon in regards to lots of issues, and most notably homelessness. But I discovered upon taking office that we were still working off the plan that we were working off of when I worked here 10 years ago. And it was then known as the, I think, the 10-year plan in homelessness. Well, it's been more than 10 years since the adoption of that plan. So it's certainly appropriate to engage in this collaborative process again, and I'm grateful to the council members who are participating, and grateful to Innis-Munch for donating this funding for the consultant.
Absolutely.
Aubrey, will you be announcing times for the committee meetings and invite interested parties to speak to the committee during this process?
Yeah, the task force meetings are publicly noticed meetings, and they're open to the community. They're open to the public. And the, the public notice has gone out already for the first meeting, and it is tomorrow at 1:30 at the library, Friends of the Library Room on the 4th floor.
The downtown library.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just, may I say something real quick? I am so excited to participate in this, I don't know, this task force. When I was knocking doors, there were about five, six things that people told me over and over and over again that they were concerned about. I would ask concerns for your neighborhood, hopes for the city. And homelessness would always appear. I mean, it was just always there. They would talk about it. And I, the really good news in Ward 2 was those voters, they weren't like, oh, let's kick these people to the periphery and let's get rid of them. They were, they would always say, I recognize this as a complicated, a complicated issue. What can we do to solve it? And just know that there are people who call Ward 2 home that are really good people, and they're ready to work with us on this. And I, I'm so excited to be their voice also. Thank you.
I'd also like to just add that I'm really excited about this. Similarly, in Ward 6, knocking doors, lots of folks brought up homelessness as a concern, and working in social services, it's something that's always top of mind for myself. And, you know, we do talk about homelessness as a very complex issue, but really, it always comes back to we don't have enough affordable housing. So I'm excited to work with this group of folks to talk about that as the really key, because we do have a lot of amazing services in this city that have done a lot of great coordination off of that 10-year plan. And obviously, there's always room for improvement. And I know that there are some, some different programs that I'll be starting that I think will, will aid that, but, but I'm excited to kind of bring all these folks to the table to talk about that really crucial piece of as we become a more attractive, exciting place to live for young people, people with higher incomes. We know that that brings unintended consequences of higher, higher rents, and with already knowing we have an affordable housing issue, recognizing that we really need to talk about that in the open and see going forward what we can do. So thanks for, for pulling all this together, everyone that's been involved.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Aubrey.
Thank you.
So we'll move on now to Item 7O. Councilwoman Nice wanted to talk about that.
Yes, I wanted to see if we could pull this out, vote separately, to defer.
To defer?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, did we have, we don't have a motion on the consent docket yet. Why don't you go ahead and do that? We'll just, oh, yeah, what date would you prefer to defer it to? The next meeting?
Yes, let's do two weeks, please.
Next, May 7.
Okay, I move to defer until May 7, please.
Second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I spoke to the gentleman that this is pertaining to, and he, he did ask for time for this, and I did say, yes, I will give you just a couple days to understand what's going on a little further. So that's the only reason that I'm allowing this defer, deferment, to be deferred.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, next up is also your item, Councilwoman Nice, Item 7W.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to point out about the resurfacing and reconstruction that's happening on Northeast 164th Street from North Hawassee to North Choctaw Road. And I know a lot of folks are going to be excited about this, so we are thankful for the county commissioners of Oklahoma County and also the City of Edmund, and in relation to the City of Oklahoma City for this agreement to get this street resurfaced. So I know most folks that travel that road are definitely going to be excited about that.
Yeah, and since you brought up Edmond, I think we all recognize that the gentleman earlier, he said he lives in Edmond in Ward 7.
Yes, he did.
Lives in Oklahoma City, actually.
Yes, he did.
And is no doubt appreciative for this project. Item X, we have a citizen to be heard, Tammy Hines, on behalf of Glandia Country Club.
Good morning, city council members. Mayor Holt, thank you so much for hearing me, and I know that I only have a few minutes, so I'll be brief. I want to provide a bit of background on the private dispute that is the backdrop of this proposed agreement, so that everybody is well aware of the private dispute that the city will inject itself should it agree to enter into this agreement. Sometime in 2017, GPG obtained a permit to construct a roadway over my client's property. My client owns this property in fee. GCC never gave permission to GPG to construct this roadway. Ultimately, my client brought a lawsuit in Oklahoma County seeking declaratory judgment from the courts that GPG did not, in fact, have a right to build this roadway over my client's property. My client only sought declaratory judgment because up until that point, GPG had not begun construction on that property. In January of this year, the court ruled that GPG, as a private party, did, in fact, not have right to build a roadway over my client's property, and to do so would be a trespass. Thereafter, GPG began construction of the roadway on my client's property. Therefore, we sought not only a temporary restraining order, but also to amend our petition in order to get, in order to add a claim for trespass, seek actual, as well as punitive damages against GPG. Now we have this ingrained in front of you. Essentially, what it would seem to me is that GPG is trying to vitiate the possibility of damages for its client, and it is trying to pass off the problem onto the city, and this just can't, this just can't happen. My client will fight it tooth and nail, not only still as to GPG. It will continue to seek actual damages. It will continue to seek punitive damages. It will also add a claim as to the city, should the city accept this agreement, for a inverse condemnation proceeding, as well as seek all damages it can against the city. And I also want to correct a few inaccuracies in this proposed agreement, council. It states that GPG engaged an engineer to design an extension of Meridian Avenue. What it does not say is that they engaged to design an extension of Meridian Avenue on my client's property, not on GPG's property wholly. This attempted agreement also is not in conformance with Judge Ogden's orders. Judge Ogden did not make a ruling in any way as to what the city can or cannot do. That's not what was in front of Judge Ogden. What was in front of Judge Ogden was what a private party can or cannot do, and the Judge Ogden ruled that the private party, GPG, did not have a right to build a road on my client's property, which GPG did. It did not have a right to do that. It committed a trespass. We will seek damages. I hope the city will not, will not enter into this agreement, city council. I hope it will see what GPG is attempting to do here. I hope the city council will not essentially condone a private party trespassing on another private party's land and then seeking to dedicate that trespass to the city. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have an opinion on this, Councilman Stonecifer?
I do, I do. I've had a chance to talk to Kenny about this. I've had a chance to talk to Craig Keith about this. I've had a chance to visit with Eric. And Craig, if you want to come up, and Eric, if you'll just take a seat for a second.
Absolutely.
I've got a couple of questions, and I want to make sure I'm clear on this. I've looked closely at this, and the one thing that I think Judge Ogden was concerned about was if this turned out to be a private road and the city decided not to accept it, then what happened? And, but the key point in my mind, from talking to these bright legal minds and engineers, is that the city has an easement, because this is a section line. Meridian is a section line, and we have the easement, and we have the right to build this road. I've gone out and looked at the facilities. It's going to be a wonderful healthcare provider facilities, which is greatly needed in and around Mercy Hospital. And so this, because of Judge Ogden's concern, the way to correct this problem is for us to contractually state that we will agree to accept this road and maintain it after it's completed. We're not paying for the building of it. That's being paid for by the developer. And we have an easement, and we have the right to have that road built there. And so I am, did I say that correctly, Craig?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so, and so in the agreement where it says, whereas Judge Ogden acknowledged a city has by law the right to construct a road on a section line easement, and Eric, Meridian's a section line easement, right?
It's a section line road, yes.
Okay, okay. You said it much better than I did. Thank you. And so I have no concerns about this whatsoever moving forward. Whatever happens in the district court will happen in the district court, but I feel that we are on solid legal grounds for accepting the road because of the easement that we have.
Mark, I have a question, or someone else. So if this lawsuit wasn't pending, or this adverse action was not present, and we wanted to build a road, would we go through condemnation proceedings to acquire the road?
Not in a section line road situation. We would not need to.
We don't need to.
Condemn an easement because we already have an easement by virtue of the Organic Act.
Okay. So, again, just to clarify, even if this activity was not pending, we could go out there on our own accord with no condemnation effort and begin constructing a road?
Because it's our easement.
Yeah.
Under the Constitution.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that item? Thank you, gentlemen. Then you're next up with item Y1.
Well.
I'm sorry. You need to sign up, sir, if you want to speak.
I did. It's up there.
We don't have you.
You don't?
Actually, he wrote 7X. Miscommunication with the clerk. Come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Michael C. Washington, 2900 North 18th and 19th Street. I don't know who these people think they are, that they can just come in and bulldog people's property. I mean, what kind of, are we in a draconian type of society here? What is in need for a private citizen to obtain or even buy property, for the most part, then let a private, another person come in and say, well, we want to be able to roll through here because we got some financially advantageous to us that we need to do? I don't believe that this person, whoever this person is, I don't even know if I'm a man in the moon, but I stand for justice. Martin Luther King said, "An injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere," and I greatly agree with that assessment and conclusion. Now, I certainly would be upset were I to buy properties with my hard-earned dollars, no matter how I may have obtained it, or obtained, whatever way you want to use it, and then to have a private company. Now, is this quote-unquote "an eminent domain" situation? I didn't hear that during this discussion. It seems to me that eminent domain would be the only reason or the only authority that this city council would have to allow this highway or whatever street they want to go through this man's property. Now, you bought this property with the understanding that this property was mine, to do as I want, and then if you trespass, I can send you to prison or jail, and not only that, ask you for how much money you got in your pocket. And I support that person wholeheartedly. I support this man's right to have his property independently, and I support this man's right to not be interfered with, because if he took the legal steps to acquire this property, spent his monies, you know, and got with his councils or whatever the case may be, he should not be squandered by overzealous group GPG. Again, don't know if I'm a man in the moon. Don't have anything personal against them, but at the same time, I have a person against a person like to bulldog, because I don't like bulldogs on any situation. And I say that in conclusion, that this order that this attorney spoke about, you know, restraining order, all this should be granted, and this city here should at least table it until the decision is reached by the district court. Thank you very much.
Mr. Washington, thank you. I do have another question. Okay. So, and maybe this one's best answered by Eric. Does the city have plans to continue this road? I mean, what's, do we have a map we could look at so that you could show us what the city's long-term plans are? Are we going to continue to extend this?
So, there is a, north Meridian, just north of Memorial. Tim Johnson, thank you. So Memorial here at the bottom of the drawing.
Yes.
Has been partially extended already. So it has actually been opened up to a point that's about the middle part of the drawing that you see here. What's under construction is the next portion in green.
Okay.
So it's slowly being extended, but it's not being opened all at once. It's not like the whole next mile of north Meridian's being opened, so it's in pieces. There are some constraints to the north. There are some drainage constraints. There's the golf course. There are some other things to the north. I would not see this extending past that point. So I think that this is probably the final extension of north Meridian at this location, but that does not mean that it could not be. It just has some engineering and other challenges going.
Eric, so everybody can get their bearings. Can you point where Mercy Hospital would be? It's off the picture, but it's down to the south and to the east. Yeah.
No, either way. No?
Yeah. That's Mercy.
Not really. It's over here.
So, but if you're familiar with Cobb Engineering's offices, CEC offices on Memorial, their office building is here. Obviously, the strip center shopping mall that is through here that's also on Memorial, if you're familiar with the north side. So again, it's partially opened. It's in statutory right-of-way. The plans have been prepared, and they've actually been submitted to the city for construction. And this isn't an unfamiliar practice, at least for Oklahoma City, when new roads are constructed. The city does not do all the construction of city streets. I think one of the things that's mentioned in the memorandum to you as a part of the council is that should this had proceeded, an item would have been brought to this council once the construction was complete for the council to accept that road as a public road for future and long-term maintenance. This is done with neighborhoods. This is done with other roads. Sometimes they're on section line, and sometimes they are not. Just in this case, this one happens to be a section line road being completed by a private entity that was intended to be brought before the city council for consideration.
But to me, it does make a difference, the fact that this isn't a whole section line that we plan to extend indefinitely or continuously. It's just a small section. Why don't we wait and let them resolve their issues in court?
I'd like to see the healthcare provider open up and provide services and businesses business in around Mercy Hospital.
No, I understand, but I think, bottom line, this is getting back to a money issue, you know, in terms of if the current property owner, you know, needs to be compensated for access to their property, why don't they resolve that themselves and then come to the city?
You're talking about the property owner on the east side, not the healthcare provider that's developing the facility that's been built?
Well, I'm talking about the current property owner.
Yeah, the current property owner is a small strip of land on the east side. That property owner's where, from California? Is that right?
The property owner that I represent is a private company that actually is in Oklahoma City.
Okay, all right. And we have the easement. We have the right to build the road, and this is normally done. It's just the judge had some concerns about what if Oklahoma City would not accept this? And then we have this private road sitting there. And so in meeting with Craig and meeting with Kenny, they told me that this section line is an easement that gives us the right to build the road. In this instance, we're not paying for it. The developer is paying for it. We're accepting it after it's completed and reviewed by our city staff to make it sure it's a good road. And so I don't see any reason in holding up the healthcare provider from providing healthcare services.
And, Mark, I understand the concept of the city having easement rights with respect to section line roads. But I would think the theory behind that is we didn't want to be impeded as the city expanded and it needs new, you know, thoroughways and roads. This is just an extension of a small area, and I don't think that was the intent of this easement for section line roads.
I don't know if you remember, this property has come before us several times.
Yes, I remember.
And at one time, it was going to be a five-story condominium development. And so these people went out and bought the property. They sat down and compromised with the landowners to the west, and they only went up, I think, two stories on this property. And now they're ready to open and start providing healthcare services to the public. And I think that's a good thing. And I think we have the right to maintain that road after it's completed, and I don't see why we wait. A district court action could take months, years, then there could be an appeal that would take another year and a half, and the entire time, this healthcare provider can't provide any services? I don't think that's fair to the public at large that want to use this healthcare provider.
It's really has already happened. All that's left is hearings.
I'm sorry. Can't just have people shouting out. If you'd like to speak, maybe come back to the podium.
I do have another question. So is this the only access to that healthcare provider?
It's the only access.
They can't, people cannot get to it.
They would have to make, I think, I'm not an engineer, but I think they'd have to make a new entryway further south on the property, if that's possible. But no engineer. I'm just guessing.
If I might, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. We are the project engineer and did design that road. When this tract, and I've been involved in this tract of land for a number of years for different developers. When this tract of land was created, its legal access was the statutory right-of-way on Meridian. And so that's how that lot split occurred, how the city approved the lot split, was basing it on the statutory right of being the right-of-way, being the legal access. Getting that legal access to their property through a public street extension is the method that we're using. So that's, we're extending the public street to take that legal access up to their property line.
But to answer David's question, that's the only way into the property?
That's correct. At this point in time, that's correct.
And then did I state historically right?
Yes.
Happened on the land? Okay, okay.
I'd still rather this get resolved, since there is dispute between.
I just don't want to wait two years, and I want the business to start now instead of two years from now.
I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on that item? Seeing none?
Oh.
Did you, it's in the consent docket currently.
I would move that we vote on this separately then.
Okay. We have no motion on the table, so we can go ahead and handle that if you want. Is that okay? So you want to make the motion, Mark? To move just this item, just go ahead and vote on it?
Yeah, I'm going to move this item. It'll be voted on at this time.
Before, hang on, I'm sorry.
Sure. Councilman Cooper.
This, I'm, gosh, I'm a bit with Greenwell on this. Like, I would like a little bit more time to talk about this. Maybe not two years, but at least would like, I mean, this is brand-new to someone who just joined the council two weeks ago. I don't know the history. I mean, just two weeks even to talk about what the legal ramifications? I don't want to put the city in a position where we're getting sued, you know, or something like this. And I'm still just looking at this map, just to Greenwell's question, is it, there's no access off of Memorial Road into this facility? It would literally just have to be this road that we're creating? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
It's just that road, right, Tim? It's the only road into it.
Would you consider a deferral in lieu of voting on it today?
I don't understand why we're deferring it. I really don't. What is the purpose?
Well, I'm not prepared to vote in favor of it right now. I may be two weeks from today.
I agree. I am inclined to go that direction. I just want to make sure that I'm making the right decision.
I'll withdraw my motion. I'll make a motion to defer this for two weeks.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second on a deferral of item 7X for two weeks. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we're at the discussion that Councilman Stonecifer requested for item 7Y1.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is, as Nikki was talking about, a resurfacing project on Memorial Road. And the reason I brought it up is it's in the far west part of Ward 8, which is a rural a rural agricultural area, a really beautiful part of the ward. And there's not many people out there, but there's some roads that need some work. And I know that people out there are going to be really happy to hear about this. But the other reason I brought it up, James, is that I wanted Craig to tell the newer members about, this is a 2007 general obligation bond, and why it takes the time it does to, this is some of the last funds, and if you could explain why it takes that, the timing issue for this to occur?
I mean, one of the issues that we have, and Eric can talk about the specific selection of the project, but one of the issues that we have is when we approve a bond issue, we are selling bonds at a certain rate to be able to make sure that we're maintaining an average of about 16 mills on our mill levy, on our property tax. And so it just takes time, you know? When we approve the bond issue, I think 2017, we were estimating it'd take about 10 years to sell the bonds. And then as we sell the bonds, and we have to design the projects and get the projects prepared, sometimes we can also have other issues. It could be acquiring easements, or it could be issues of utility relocations, things like that, that help delay projects further. So there's a lot of different issues. I don't know in this specific project what delayed it, but one of the issues is just the fact of how we sell the bonds over multiple years.
And the selling the bonds over multiple years takes time, and I'm just happy to say that this $750,000 project is going to begin soon.
Great. Item 7Y3, Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I also wanted to bring up the street resurfacing that's going to happen on northeast 178th Street. And this is from a North XXX Road to North Peabody Road. So I know we have some folks in the Jones area that are really going to be excited about this one. So I just wanted to make sure we got that out in the public for all to know.
Great, thank you. That concludes all the items that anybody wanted to talk about. I would also draw your attention, item 7AM6. This is a judgment that's now on the docket to be approved. You may recall the gentleman at last meeting who was about to be denied, and he argued and turned it around. So now it's on the agenda to be approved. Is there anything else that anyone wants to talk about in the consent docket? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to move the items save the two that we just deferred.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second to move the consent docket except for the two items we deferred. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to the concurrence docket on page 15 of your printed agenda. That's items, item eight, items A through H, which we could take with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at item nine, items requiring separate votes on page 16. These are planning cases to begin with. We're at item 9A. These were ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval. Item 9A1 is at 9418 Northwest 122nd Street, going from AA to R1. Councilman Stonecifer?
Yes, it's my understanding that this item was approved by the Planning Commission without any protests, and it's also my understanding that there are no protests here today, so I would move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A2 is at 11604 North I-35 Service Road, going from AA to I-1. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, in this development, we know it's for light industrial development, and there were no protesters. And, Mrs. Francis, do we have anyone?
No.
All right, with that, I ask that we move approval.
All right. Anybody got a second? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 93, this is at 5904 Ranger Lang, going from R1I2. Councilman McAtee?
Yes, this was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. Is there anyone here to speak on this, that signed up? Seeing none, this is a piece of property that's in the middle of nowhere as far as residential is concerned. Makes every good sense to make it industrial as the zoning request, so I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A4, this is at 3617 Southwest 44th, going from C3 to SPOD 1105. Councilman McAtee?
Yes, this was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission. Has anybody signed up? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would it be all right if I just make a motion to approve it, or do you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay. This makes also good zoning sense, so I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item, just to remind you, item 9A5 was deferred, so that brings us to 9B ordinances on final hearing. These were recommended for denial at the Planning Commission. These were also deferred from our last meeting. 9B1 is 17600 Southeast 104th Street, going from AA to PUD 1709. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Francis, has anyone signed up?
Not for B1.
Okay. I've been working with the adjoining property owners, along with the developer, over this past week, along with meeting with staff, and I think we're close to getting close on this one, but I'm going to make a motion that we defer for another two weeks. I'd like to make one more site visit with the changes.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Item is deferred. 9B2, 11798 Southeast 119th Street, going from AA to PUD 1710. Councilman Stone, and there are a couple people who've signed up to speak. Do you want to hear from them first?
Come on up and look.
Okay. So we'll start with Brian Hall.
Good morning. My name is Brian Hall. I live at 11701 Southeast 119th Street, Oklahoma City, in Ward Four. Thank you for this opportunity to address the PUD 1710. I live right across the street from this area, and this area is agricultural. The person is trying to make it residential and put two-acre lots. It's all agricultural. We all have agricultural, we all have five-acre lots. That is low intensity. What the developer's trying to do is go to medium intensity with the two-acre lots. It is not in accordance with the comprehensive initiative Oklahoma City plan. None of this rezoning is. I protested the Planning Commission. I mailed a letter in. It did not make it to the packet. So I physically came down to protest at the city council, and that is why I took off work to come here today, because it's that strong. This is a spot rezoning of just that section of land. And I don't know if you've been there, Mr. Stone, but it is not a subdivision area. Thank you for your time. The next is a neighbor who also lives across the street.
Good morning. Alan Swartz. I'm at 11625 Southeast 119th. So I'll just give a little background. My wife's been driving down this road for about 10 years and has always said that she wanted to live there, in large part because it was surrounded by agricultural zone property, and that's the type of area we wanted to live in. So when she finally got out of school and school loans were paid, we decided to build a house and move in there, which is what we did. And much to our chagrin, six months later, we get a notice that there wants to be a non-agricultural residential area across the street. So I, like Brian said, I would just ask that you enforce the comprehensive plan and deny this rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilman Stone?
Thank both of you for coming down, because I hadn't seen any protests on this at all. Matter of fact, when I looked at the preliminary plat, I personally kind of had issues with it. I think something a little different needs to happen there. And that some of the issues I had with it is, to me, it looked a little too urban. So actually, I've been already working with the developer or his representative on this one. I'd already kind of kicked it back to him and said he could try again, possibly with a different design, and see if we can't work something out. And I'd planned on deferring this one anyway, to give him some time to continue to refine that. But I will be in contact with both of you over the next couple of weeks, and as those changes come up, then I would certainly like to be able to discuss them with both of you. And I'll meet with you, if possible, I'll meet with you out there on-site, so you don't have to drive down here again. But the main thing I want to try and do is find something that, you know, appeals to everybody. So again, I appreciate y'all coming down. With that, I'll move for deferment.
So a two-week deferral?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9C, ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval. These are special permits. Item 9C1 is a special permit to operate a light industrial use in the downtown business district at 701 West Sheridan. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah, Francis, do we have anyone to speak? Well, yeah, I see that this was unanimously recommended for approval by Planning Commission, so I move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9C2, special permit to operate a drinking establishment in the I-1 Light Industrial District at 2829 West California. And we do have somebody who signed up to speak here, Councilwoman Hammond. Would you like to hear from that person first?
Yes, please.
Jorge Mendros?
It's George, actually. Jorge Mendros.
Oh, okay, sorry.
JHM Architecture and Design, 5800 North Quarter, Norman, Oklahoma. Just basically, we're looking for a special permit for the drinking establishment that's been there for over 60 years. One of the things, in the prior meeting, they asked that there would be a buffer, there's a buffer zone. We do have a fence in place surrounding it, and we're just wanting to get a certificate of compliance so that we can move forward.
Yeah, and I see that. Thank you for coming down. I see that the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended for approval, so I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. 9D, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing east 225 feet of Northwest 65th, extending east from Chertelle. Councilman Cooper?
Is there anyone here to speak on particular? Yeah, so I reached out to learn a little bit more about it, and there were no descending votes, and would like to move approval on the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to items 9E, F, and G, which all relate to the potential special election on July 9th to amend our franchise with ONG. And I think maybe Craig will speak to that.
Sure. Yeah, so all three of these items are just required to be able to call the election. This is one where we'd had an audit that was conducted several years ago. We've been in negotiations and discussions with ONG about the definition of revenues that are included in gross revenues when they calculate the franchise fee that they pay to us. We came back with the agreement, they were willing to pay for the election, to be able to hold this election, and to be able to clarify this language. They didn't agree with the interpretation of the audit, but said they're willing to clarify the language in the franchise agreement so that we can address that issue. And so we just came to that agreement, and that's what all three of these items do, is help us to carry forward this election to be called on July 9th.
And they pay for the cost?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would start entertaining motions if people want to. So I'll take that as a motion for 9E. Yes?
I do want to point out one thing to you. When we introduced the ordinance, it has had two minor changes to it during the three or four-week interim.
Okay.
In the title, we've added the word "rate" behind the word "franchise fee," and then in the body of it, we struck the word "one okay."
So are you considering those Scrivener's errors? Is that why we're not voting on amendments today?
Right, they're Scrivener's errors or oversights.
Okay.
So the ordinance you will be adopting today has those changes in it.
Appreciate you pointing that out. Okay. Okay, we had a motion and a second on item 9E. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F, I'd take a motion for that. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And finally, on this topic, 9G. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. So we will have an election in the city of Oklahoma City on July 9th, it would appear. And so we certainly, though my expectations are somewhat low, I certainly encourage everyone to vote out, get out and vote that day. All right, 9H, ordinance on final hearing. This relates to parklets. We heard a presentation two meetings ago, and then we had a public hearing our last meeting, and this would be the potential vote on final passage of this ordinance change. I would entertain a motion, or questions, or discussion? Got a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9I1, this is the second of three steps in our traditional process of changing ordinances. There was a presentation at the last meeting. This relates to the Electrical Code. So today is simply the public hearing for item 9I1. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on that item? Okay. We also have a public hearing scheduled for 9I2. This is regarding a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the National Electrical Code. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under that public hearing? Seeing none, we will move on to item 9J. This is also a public hearing. This is the second of three steps in an ordinance change related to alarm permits. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding 9J, the ordinance change regarding alarm permits? Seeing none, we'll go on to 9K. This is the first of three steps for an ordinance change. This ordinance would be introduced today, set for public hearing May 7th and final hearing May 14th. It relates to drainage and flood control, and I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Eric Winger, our Public Works Director, is going to give us a quick overview on this change.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item that you have before you are revisions to FEMA flood maps called FIRMs. It's a flood insurance rate map that's actually used for all of Oklahoma City. So there are four counties in Oklahoma City. There are two revisions today being proposed. These are to both Canadian and Potawatomi Counties. This has no effect on Oklahoma and Cleveland County, but included in our drainage ordinance, Chapter 16, and specifically Section 1618, these FIRM, which is the FEMA insurance rate maps, are actually accounted for by their date. And in our ordinance, we need to update those dates with revised maps from FEMA. So we were put on notice that we need to include this as an ordinance change, therefore we need to introduce them today. There'll be a public hearing, and then we'll have that final hearing, which then effective date will be right after the final hearing. We are going to ask for the emergency on this. FEMA has asked that we expedite this as much as possible, just to maintain our insurance rates for Oklahoma City for those that have flood insurance. And so on the final adoption on May 14th, we will be asking for the emergency if at all possible, just to make sure that we stay in compliance with FEMA. But it's a, I would say that this is routine. Maps are updated as new data is received, and so they do move some of the boundaries. What I would say is the maps that are being revised do not have any effect on any developed properties. Potawatomi County being in far southeast Oklahoma City, the part of Canadian County that's being affected and far west Oklahoma City, there aren't developments or individuals that should be affected with any property. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? If not, we could take a motion to introduce the ordinance. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to introduce it for consideration at our next two meetings. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Eric. And I think you'll stay there, because at 9L2 is a resolution adopting and confirming an assessment role for the Street Improvement Assessment District in Silverhawk Phase 1 Edition. We'll return back to the public hearing after we hear a little bit about what this is.
So again, as we talk about different processes and things that don't happen regularly at the council, but this is an assessment district, and we do bring these before the council several times a year. What they're traditionally used for, and it's under state statute that provides for either new construction, which isn't done very often, but also upgrading a private street to make it public. So in this case, what we have is an assessment district for Silverhawk Phase 1, where the streets are currently private, and there's been a petition received from the residents and the property owners on that, in that division, to convert that street to public use. That way, the city takes over all the maintenance into the future. So again, it's by state statute this is provided for. We do have some rules, and so what I'll do is I'll just outline what we traditionally go through, is we look for that petition first. It has to be better than 50% before we'll actually take action on that. So if the property owners petition themselves and they submit that petition, we then have a resolution that the council directs the city engineer, me to go ahead and do a review[1706.71] a resolution that the council directs the city engineer, me to go ahead and do a review and assess, see what the upgrades need to be. A lot of times, we have to do some resurfacing. Some cases, we have to do some drainage updates. But again, it's to bring that road up to a city standard as if we were having built it ourselves. Once we receive that report, we then make a report to the council, and the council then by resolution directs whether or not we proceed with the assessment district. The council, in effect, creates that assessment district. Plans are then prepared, bids are then completed. This item today, the step that we're currently at, is the work is done, and this is the assessment role. So included in your packet, it'll show the final cost of $132,000. You're going to see that there's 30 property owners. This sets the $4,408 per lot that'll be assessed over the next 10 years, and the contractor is actually paid through bonds. And so the contractor who has completed this work as a city project is paid by bonds. They receive interest on those bonds, so there's a value for a contractor to go and do these types of projects. We have one final item that will come back to you, which will be the actual issuance of the bonds. So with your approval today, this is the public hearing for the assessment role. Provides for if anybody has a protest with the amounts of the assessment, that they have an opportunity to do so before they're put into effect. I would say that we do sometimes, you know, maybe a few of these a year, some years more, some years less.
I would say these Title XI public assessments are being used more and more. When I go to homeowners association meetings, people say we want something done quickly. We had one example, it was last year where their well water went bad. The city didn't have the money to do something immediately, so they assessed themselves so they could be provided city water. And the great thing about it is, it only takes a 51% approval. And so it's something you ought to remember if you are dealing with a homeowners association that has an issue. This is by statute. It allows them to assess themselves. And I think we pay for it on our water bill, or do they make their payments?
On the streets, it comes through your property taxes.
Yeah.
So your property tax bill is where those assessments are each year.
Like on the water, wouldn't it?
I don't know. That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Eric, do you happen to know what percentage of the homeowners voted for this?
Yes, this one is actually quite high. This one was...
Seventy-three percent, it looks like.
That's it. So, sorry. Yeah, 73%.
Any further questions for Eric? All right, then I would like to ask if the public has anything they'd want to say under the public hearing portion of 9L1, which is regarding item 9L2. Seeing none, then we could return to 9L2 and adopt the resolution. Move the item. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Brings us to 9M1. This is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for 9M2, a resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Move the resolution. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9N1, this is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures in the Historic Preservation Landmark District, specifically 935 Northeast 17th. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Yes, come forward. If you'd please state your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes.
My name is Evangeline Bonzi, and the address I'm talking about is 935 Northeast 17th Street, Oklahoma City. I am in the process of getting it demolished. I have a contractor that has, I have assigned it to, but due to the weather, we have not been able to cap the sewer, because it involves digging, and the ground hasn't been dry enough. So I have the receipt or a copy of the contract from the contractor that will be working on it, but we're waiting on the weather to give us permission, I guess, to get it done.
Yes, let's defer this, and based on that contract that we have, look into getting that done.
Okay. So there's a motion for deferral?
Motion for defer.
Got a motion and a second for two weeks, I presume, next meeting?
Yes. Will that be plenty of time? We'll work with that first.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that motion?
If, you know, if we leave it on, she still has 30 days to demolish it before we will go in and demolish it. I'm just stating that fact. I'm fine with deferring it. We can do this either direction, but oftentimes, we do that is we'll leave it on. We've got 30 days before we take any action anyway, and we would work with the homeowner and make sure they had the opportunity leading up to that. So that's another option, is to leave it on and allow for that 30 days.
Let's just, I would rather defer, as I asked, and then we'll work with that, just because the weather may be, we don't know what's going to happen, so I want to take that time if we can. And especially if she's working to try to get that done. We should give her the time.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
What day?
For the next meeting, two weeks from now. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Your item has been deferred for two weeks.
Thank you.
So it will be on the agenda at the next meeting, unless, I guess, if she tears it down, then it will not be on the agenda anymore? Is that how that works?
If we deferred it, we have to bring it back?
It would be requested to be straightened. That's the first of the meeting.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to 901. This is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the ones that were struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding these items on 901? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 902, declaring that the structures are unsecured. Move the resolution. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9P1, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings here listed, except for the one struck at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing portion for 9P1? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9P2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. This brings us to 9Q. This is a resolution amending the 2018-2019 Consolidated Plan and Fourth Action Year Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to establish a Section 108 loan program that may assist the redevelopment of the First National Center, et cetera. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yeah, Chris Varga is here from our planning department. Just give us an update on this.
Good morning. I'm Chris Varga. I am the Division Manager of the Housing and Community Development Division in the Planning Department. This item before you today is to amend the consolidated plan that we submit to HUD. It's for this year's plan that would be effective immediately upon your approval and HUD's approval. And the reason that we're asking is because these three items would constitute substantial amendments that require a public opportunity for review. The substantial amendment is required whenever you add a new program to the consolidated plan, and this item addresses three particular things that are considered new programs. One is to authorize storm shelter activities that were previously authorized under last year's consolidated plan when we still had disaster recovery funds. Those funds have since expired, and we did not anticipate a need for the storm shelter program, so we did not include it in this current year's plan. However, we have about 10 storm shelters that were previously approved, and we're wanting to add this line item back in and continue to fund them by moving some housing rehab funds over to accommodate that in an amount of about $33,000. Our second item would be the Oklahoma City Housing Authority Inspection Program. In January, the council approved a memorandum of agreement with the OCHA so that the city staff can provide some inspection services for some of their needs. This item would establish that in our consolidated plan. It's a new item, be a housing inspection program, and we would preload that with $50,000 CDBG from unallocated funds. And then, if you recall, the item allows us to bill OCHA for our expenses, and we capture that as CDBG program income. The third item relates to the Section 108 loan process. This item is needed or requested by the First National Center Legal Counsel to establish this in the consolidated plan. And I think it's important to notice that the Section 108 program, for those of you who aren't very familiar with it, is part of the Section 108 of the Housing and Community Development Act. It gives us the authority. It allows CDBG program recipients to actually lend or borrow money from the government, borrow money from a private lender, with those loans are 100% secured by the federal government. And then we are allowed to borrow up to five times our annual CDBG allocation, which is about $24 million at this point. We have already spent about $10 million, so we have about a $14 million potential to borrow. This item today is to, not to authorize a loan to First National Center. We're not near to that point. We received an application from them in the summer of 2017. We did extensive underwriting with them through the year. We gave them a letter in 2018, May, about a year ago, of additional information that we needed. Since then, we know that the financial structure of the deal has changed considerably. We're awaiting a new submittal from them, which they think is forthcoming. We still have extensive underwriting to do before we'd be in a position to approve or recommend your approval for such a loan. So today's action does not do that. It does not commit any funds to First National Center. What it does do is it sets a line, a timestamp, so that in the event, in the future, if we were to decide to issue them a loan, they would be allowed to go back to this date and ask for reimbursement of pre-award costs. This does not affect, the amount of loan that they would be given wouldn't increase it in any way. It only marks this timeline as a beginning point for those pre-award costs. So with that, that's summary of what we're trying to accomplish. Any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The Section 108 loan program, that's what we use to rehab the Skirvin Hotel in part? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then the second question is, with the Section 108 loan program, will that not only include loans, but a tax credit component?
The Section 108 will not. That will be a separate item. We also use this mechanism on 21C Museum Hotel, and it's a very extensive and lengthy underwriting process with HUD. They have to review our, they have to give the loan to the city, and then the city rewrites the loan to a borrower. And HUD is involved in all of that underwriting from, on our end, and the end to the borrower, too. So typically, it's a process that takes about a year, once it gets actively started. So it's not anything overnight. It's quite an involved process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Could entertain a motion to adopt the resolution? Move the item. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9R is a joint resolution with Independent School District Number 89, of course, also known as Oklahoma City Public Schools, and the School Bond Advisory Board establishing a policy for allowing I-89 to bid projects and/or utilize annual contracts for 2016 bond projects less than $50,000, et cetera. Craig?
Yeah, so I asked David Todd. He's our, the director of the MAPS program, and they also manage the school bond program. And so we had been talking with the school, they were talking with us initially about ways that we could help expedite projects associated with the Pathway to Greatness and getting some of that school projects done. And they'd talked about a few administrative issues that they would like to work through with us, so I'll let David just give us a high-level overview on this.
Thank you. So currently, we have an agreement between the city and the school district that requires all of the expenditures for the 2016, their 2016 bond issue, come through the MAPS office. We prepare it for the School Bond Advisory Board, and then they make recommendations to the Board of Education for approval. And then that's when the projects can be completed. We've run into several instances where a sewer line or a water line or something like that fails and it needs to be fixed, and it can take up to six weeks to get through the process. So what we're asking with this resolution is to allow the MAPS staff to still review the projects as they come in, but then go ahead and approve anything less than $50,000, like these sewer lines and clogged lines and water lines and ceiling tiles, all these various maintenance things that come through. So we will approve those and authorize them to be completed, and then bring them back to the School Bond Advisory Board for ratification, and then it will go on to the Board of Education.
Okay. Any questions for David? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes, the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, we've got a 9S1, resolution approving the request for salary continuation for firefighter Mark Bradley. And I don't believe we need executive session unless somebody thinks we do. Otherwise, I'll take a motion on the resolution. Move the item. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9T is a request to enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding Wondick v. City. Move the item into executive session. Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will handle that at the end of our other business. That brings us to 9U1, a claim recommended for denial. Does anyone here wish to speak on this claim? Move the item. Seeing none, we'll, got a motion now and a second to deny the claim. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 9A1, our claims recommended for approval, items A through N. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on these items? Seeing none, I'd take a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. This brings us to 11 items from council. Why don't we handle the business before we go around the horseshoe? First, we have 11A. This is a resolution approving travel and reimbursement of travel-related expenses for Councilman Stonecypher to join the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber on their annual DC visit. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously, and with the six required votes. And then we are at 11B. So 11B and C are items that were considered at a previous meeting and introduced by Councilman Shadid, I should say authored by Councilman Shadid. They were then introduced, and according to Kenny, this is a somewhat unique scenario, but according to Kenny, the fact that we introduced them means that we, we as a council at least, own them for consideration, and the fact that Councilman Shadid is no longer in the council is not a legally operative issue here. But to move forward with the addition of these, of this potential charter change to the July 9th election that was just called a few moments ago, someone would have to pursue it from this point forward. So I guess I sort of open it up, and I don't know of Councilman Cooper, if you feel some obligation to carry this forward or not, but...
Oh, boy. So, thanks, Mayor. As the rest of the council gets to know me, and as the people outside of Ward Two get to know me, I think it's very important that everyone know that I never made this an issue during my campaign. This was never something I spoke with voters about. I knew a year ago, when I made the decision to run for office, that I would have to give up my teaching job, and I agonized over it, January, February, March, and then when the teacher walkout happened, I knew I had to. Like, I knew I had to run for office. All the research, and you've heard me say this in the speech I gave the night before my swearing-in, you know, all the research from Stanford and economic research had told me that every year that a kid spent in a better environment, their chances of going to college went up, and teen pregnancy went down, they earned more of their lifetimes, they had more stable families. And then I found that the parts of town that weren't those better environments were associated with segregation and income inequality and a lack of social cohesion and single-parent families, and those are my students on the South Side, and I made the decision to run. And I knew when I was an adjunct professor before teaching on the South Side, only making $22,000, $23,000 a year with no benefits, that my passion of being in the classroom trumped making money. And I made the decision a year ago to run for office to better those environments for my students. I did not run for office to have a teacher's salary and a city council salary. This was Councilman Shadid's idea. That said, after I told Councilman Shadid that I would be stepping down from teaching as per city ordinance, and I'd be returning to the adjunct classroom at UCO and OCU and working on council, Councilman Shadid was very upset about this, as Councilman Shadid is wont to do on such matters when it comes to income inequality and justice. He did not understand why council members only make $12,000 a year, and he worried that that limited the people who could serve on council, who have all kinds of knowledge, whether that be working in mental health or addiction services, or in the science classroom or the math classroom. I'm telling you, my math teacher should be on city council in Norman. She'd help him with that budget. So even though this was not my idea to have an election about whether or not teachers should be able to work full-time, and even though I've already made adjustments in my life to make sure that I'm able to make money as an adjunct professor and serve on council, this election coming up would not be about me. It is for the people coming after me so that they can run for office and bring their knowledge, too. So I would like to move this motion, because I think that I'd like to open up the council so that people from more diverse backgrounds can serve. I'm the first teacher, I believe, in 50 years on city council. And so I want to keep that trend going. I don't want to be the last. I don't want to be the last. Sorry for the speech, but I didn't see this coming. I literally on Friday, I looked at the agenda and was like, oh, I have to speak to this? So, oh, no. I planned that speech on Monday two weeks ago. This one was, this was a doozy. But I want to open this up for more people, so I'd be honored to move this motion.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second for item 9B, resolution proposing an amendment to the charter. And of course, it is on the topic, as Councilman Cooper described, of the qualifications for office for council members, and this would appear on the ballot on July 9th with the previously approved ONG election. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Mcatee.
Just a couple of quick questions to lay my mind, if you would. Are there any unintended consequences from doing this should this pass?
What this would do would basically allow someone who is an office, an employee of another governmental entity, like a school district, or even another city, or the federal government, to run for city council. Now, they can't, they wouldn't be able to do it if they were officers of the federal, state, school district, et cetera. So like if James were on the, the school board, that would be an officer position, so he couldn't serve in both. But just if they're just an employee of some other public entity, then they'd be able to run for the city council.
And then are there any constraints on us as council of speaking for or against this once it goes on the ballot?
No.
Good. Thank you.
Does, does this include the mayor also?
Yes, absolutely.
I would actually, just before I, I don't, I won't be able to speak to this going forward. Like I said, this was not a campaign issue for me, but it was for my voters in terms of schools. So on that note, I want to say thank you to Oklahoma City Public Schools for working with me as this transition has happened. It really means a lot to me that they allowed me to move to being a part-time teacher through the rest of the year, that I am off every Tuesday to be able to serve the people I was elected to serve. So I really want to say thank you to them. I want to say thank you to Jefferson Middle School, my principal, my assistant principal, my avid college prep students for tutoring right now, which is what they better be doing when I'm not there. This has been a transition for all of us, and I want to thank them, and I want to thank the council and Mayor Holt and city staff for working with me during this transition. It's really meant a lot to me. I feel, I feel quite welcomed.
Just to add to, excuse me, to add to Councilman Griner's answer, the charter defines council member as, to include both the mayor and the council. So even though they're elected differently, the mayor's that large and represents the whole city, they're, they're still included in the definition of council.
Any comments down here? Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table for item 9B. So seeing no further discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And then 9C, Ms. Councilman Cooper, would you like to make a motion on that?
Motion to die.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on nine, I'm sorry, I keep saying nine, 11C, 11C. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. So there will be an extra item on the July 9th ballot as well, a charter change. And I'll, I'll mention here that I'm still committed, you know, by the end of this calendar year of putting together a committee to work on other charter changes that I know people have in mind, maybe for consideration in the general election ballot of 2020. With that, we'll go around the horseshoe. Councilman Griner.
Yeah, for, I'd just like to make mention, for several years now, Kim Cooperhart has worked very diligently with a number of our neighborhoods, trying to speed up the process of improving certain things in those neighborhoods, and also having funding from the city go to support those efforts. And she just got promoted, I'd like to congratulate her on that. And then this past weekend, the fruits of her efforts were kind of evident in our area, where there were events planned by the Windsor Hills Business Group, by the West Ten Group, and people, citizens and businesses all came out and participated in those events and developed quite a bit of encouragement and enthusiasm for what's going on in their city. And so her efforts are to be complimented, and the volunteers who may put those events on should also be complimented. It was a very good joint participation between staff and citizens. Thank you, Your Honor.
I do have one thing. I recently, I recently learned about some county business on the Board of County Commissioners meeting tomorrow. Specifically, there's going to be discussion about potentially authorizing a jail trust to operate, to be part of the operations of the jail. And if there's opportunity for public comment and kind of a public hearing tomorrow to just ask questions, learn more from the commissioner who's proposing the trust, just because it would be a really big change for our county. And as the city is, you know, the, probably the largest user of our county jail, and it being in Ward 6, and the meeting being in Ward 6, I felt like it was, it made sense to just make sure folks know that there's an opportunity to go learn about that tomorrow 9:00 a.m. at the, at the county building. So yeah.
Thank you. Actually, I have a few things that I want to mention here. First, I want to explore and see how we can deem the Henrietta B. Foster Center a historic landmark due to its historic significance in the community with it being the first African-American YMCA located in the Northeast quadrant. Another thing I would like to explore is the possibility of a moratorium of implementing small-box discount stores in the Northeast community. This same model was presented in Tulsa, and they were able to do that for 180 days. And I think it's very important for us to recognize the fact that we have a food desert in Northeast Oklahoma City. And if we add small-box discount stores, that is going to totally just disregard the conversation of ever having an adequate grocery store. So that's something that I would like to explore as an option for us as a council to, to move forward for our communities and to have more options of wellness and to better feed their families. Also, speaking of health, we do know April is National Minority Health Month, so I do want to thank Mayor Holt. The week of April 11th through 17th was considered Black Maternal Health Week, and the mayor, I asked him if we could recognize that, and he so graciously agreed, and we were able to present something to the community health centers. And if you need more information about maternal, Black maternal health, and we do understand that the theme and the ladies who brought this forward are based out of Atlanta, and they want you to know that Black mamas matter. And I want to say here in Oklahoma City, we also recognize that Black mamas matter as well. And there's one more thing that I want to mention, and this is my history piece to Councilman Stonecypher.
This is my favorite part.
All right, here we go. I want to introduce you to a gentleman by the name of Reverend E.W. Perry. And I'm going to explain why he is a very important, significant role to play in Oklahoma City history. Reverend Perry was a pastor of Tabernacle Baptist Church, and at that time, it was located in the Deep Duesburg Town area, and he pastored there beginning in 1915, and he pastored for 53 years. One of the things that I want to mention with him is 1941, he became the first African-American to deliver a message to the Southern Baptist Convention. And there's also a story that is mentioned about him being refused admittance to a church because of the color of his skin, but later, he donated $500 to the building fund for a large hospital in Northwest Oklahoma City, when they stated that the hospital was for all sick people regardless of their race or religious beliefs. But the reason and purpose for me to mention his name, one, there is a park in honor of him located right next to Martin Luther King Elementary School, 1329 Northeast 48th Street. Also, 75 years ago, around Easter time in 1944, there was a pastor that reached out to Reverend Perry by the name of Guy Bellamy, and he was a white Southern Baptist pastor. He reached out to him in an effort to bring all the races together, to talk about religion, and to create a revival. And they would have this revival beginning in 1944. They would have breakfast, and they would meet for about two weeks and, and share all of their beliefs and joys. And again, this is 1944, that happened in Oklahoma City. Right now, this week kicking off this morning at 11:30, they will start this celebration at the Tabernacle Baptist Church located on 36th Street, and this celebrates 75 years of this revival. So if you have time, I would encourage you to just be a part. This revival has brought people from all across the nation, pastors from across the nation. They get their start here, and people know about this event, and they know the significance and its importance of Oklahoma City being a place of revival and also starting in the guise of uniting people of different races together. So if you can be a part, I know Mayor will be joining us on Sunday. There's something happening at St. John Baptist Church. But E.W. Perry, his park is located right next to MLK Elementary School. So now you know why it is there.
As I was looking at my City Hall window this morning at about 7:00 a.m., the vendors and the artists were fighting with the rain, and, and I'm really thankful for the rain, but I'm praying for a little sunshine for the Arts Festival. And I would encourage people, even if it is raining a little, to come out and support the Arts Festival. It's a wonderful event, and those guys were working really hard today to keep everything dry so we could enjoy the art. Thank you.
On that note, the 11 o'clock opening has been canceled due to weather, but, but the luncheon is still a go. So we'll, we'll be done, I think, well in, well in time ahead for that. So, okay, that brings us to City Manager Reports, item 12 on the agenda, and I think we'll...
Yeah, so the first item that we have up is the presentation of city council priorities. And these items, we bring them out quarterly to the council just to give highlights on some of the measures that we've identified that tie back to the council priorities. The council priority that we're highlighting at this meeting is to encourage a robust local economy. And Brent Bryant and Mark Craneberg are here to present on these.
And can I say a quick word about the council priorities since we have two new members here? We actually, these were produced by the mayor and councils some time ago, even before my...
Two years ago, right.
Two years ago. So, you know, we have so much going on right now, and we've had so much transition this last year that it hasn't made sense to engage in this process again. And I think in some ways, MAPS 4 will speak to what our priorities are over the next few months. But I think it's certainly a reasonable conversation to have, maybe in early 2020, about as the, as a new council going over these priorities again. I don't necessarily think that what we have is in great dispute, but it's probably something we ought to sort of readopt, having had so much changeover. Having said that, I don't think there's anything that we wouldn't like still to encourage than, anything more than a robust local economy. So go ahead, Brent.
Brent Bryant with the City Manager's Office. Today, we're going to talk about the council priority, which was a strong economy that supports job creation and improves the local tax base is fundamental to our growth. It's to make Oklahoma City an attractive option for current and future residents and promote a pro-business environment that makes it clear we value the contribution of a strong business community. Furthermore, council recognizes the need to foster innovation and embrace technology advances to move our city forward. Now, what we do here is we have two progress indicators that we monitor, and then Mark will talk about the third one, and they're employment levels, average weekly earnings and employments at Will Rogers World Airport. And we'll go to the first slide here, the number of people employed. Since 2010, where we started out with right at 571,000 wage earners, through January of 19, we're right at 644,000 jobs. That's a little under 1% of annualized growth. We continue to see that. Peak employments were reached in July of 18. In addition to that, we always see a spike at the end of the calendar year due to the holiday part-time employees, and then it typically falls in the, in the, in the January time period. Overall, again, it's right at a little under 1% growth. From average weekly earners, when we started it in January of 2007, it was right at $683 a week. And then in January of 2009, it's right at almost $900 a week. Adjusted for inflation, this is about an average of about 2.24% annually. The takeaway that we have with both of these slides is the slope is positive and it's moving up. Granted, there are some dips, but it does continually move upward, and we are very fortunate with that. The things that we do here at the city that contribute to these progress indicators is the first one is our job, is promoting job creation. In 2007, the city council, along with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, approved the Strategic Investment Program policy, which is to create primary jobs in Oklahoma City. Primary jobs are jobs that provide a good or service that is, which 50% of that is sold outside of our economy, with the whole idea of bringing new money into our economy. This program has been very successful. It's performance-based, most of the time, 99% of the time, it's performance-based. You provide the, you're provided in CINNIE when you create the jobs that meet all the requirements. There's one instance where we actually used some of the funds and went out and did some infrastructure improvements to help Paycom build their headquarters. And as a result of that, then as they created the jobs, their liability for us providing that went away. This requires a high degree of private sector investments and commitment with a minimum of 50 jobs or a minimum annual payroll of $1.75 million. We focus on key strategic areas. You can see there are bioscience, new-to-market headquarters, aviation, advanced manufacturing, logistics, and distribution. There's a high level of accountability in this program where we go out and audit their payroll records. We, we analyze it and make sure that they maintain what they had in the beginning, so they're not swapping jobs, that we continually are getting a net new number of jobs. To date, we have had 20 projects completed. We have 24 active, and we have two that are being, that are, we consider new. In total, you go to the next slide. In total, we anticipate over 15,000 jobs with an annual payroll of $890,000, and with a total investment of $1.2 billion. In addition to job creation, as we all know, that the city, the city of Oklahoma City is highly dependent on sales tax to fund our operations and our over $400 million general fund budget. 56% of the budget comes from sales tax. And over the years, we have done some projects, incentivized some projects to the tune of about $14 million, when you look at Cabela's, Costco, Von Mar, and the outlet mall. Again, these projects are driven on creating net new sales tax to our economy. When we look at these, while a company may generate a significant amount of new sales tax, we evaluate them and look at what's the net new to our economy, because we know that people have choices as to where they'll shop, and so, and there's only so much capacity. To date, again, most of these deals are performance-based, is all, and where they are driven by a formula. And in all of those cases, of those five items there, they're regional draws. They will draw new, new shoppers into our economy, again, which is our, which is our goal, to expand our sales tax base. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding these two indicators.
I have a question that was on my mind quite a bit as I was thinking about what to say earlier about the teacher stuff. There's been a statistic, it's been very troubling to me over the last several years. It's a national statistic, and I'm wondering how it plays out here in our city. And it said that less than half of Americans have about $500 in savings to $1,000 in savings in case there was an emergency.
Right.
And as somebody who's had some potholes every once in a while, I've had to deal with, and now all of a sudden, I'll have like $400 in savings, I'm like, woo, I did it! And then I have to go buy new tires, they're gone.
Right.
Do we have any data on our people in terms of like their savings and where we fit in terms of that national conversation? Because as we're growing our economy and, you know, things are going all right, and unemployment's low, I'm really curious about that savings component.
Right. I don't have any of that offhand, but I'm sure we can get with Dr. Evans with OCU.
We'll see, we'll see where we have available.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, if it's available.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I also have a question. So do we, I saw the employment levels going up, but do we have any data on like what kind of employment... what kind of employment that is? Whether that's gig economy, jobs with benefits, the type, like the amount of salary, if it's salary hourly, do we have any of that data?
You're talking about the, that is not what we incentivize, but the other rest?
The overall.
I don't have any of that offhand, but I can get that.
Okay, and, and for what we incentivize as well, we have that-
Yes, one of the things is a requirement of ours is you have to provide healthcare benefits to your employees and, and the employer is required to pay over 50% of the cost of those employee, of those weight benefits.
Brent?
Yes, sir.
The city isn't the only player involved in terms of providing a, an environment that's conducive for job growth. You know, we have the private sector, we have the Chamber of Commerce, we have other entities that are involved in this process. But having said that, now that first chart that you showed in terms of job growth, that was total jobs in the Oklahoma City area, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's not just incentive-type jobs?
No.
I'd be interested, and perhaps you could show that, gain some additional information in, in terms of how that compares with population growth for Oklahoma City during that same time period? And then compare that job growth in terms of percentage growth to other cities, similar cities and especially cities within the state of Texas. I, I just have a concern, we don't see the same level of growth that other communities have. And perhaps there's a variety of reasons. I could, I think we all could come up with a few as to what's limiting that. But I would like a more in-depth study if we could and then see for those communities with strong job growth, what they attribute that strong job growth to in terms of workforce-ready individuals, strong education environments, things like that. Because I think just a flat comparison of the business environment here in Oklahoma City, compare that with other communities, we're as supportive of businesses and job growth as any community is, but there are other factors that are contributing to that. And so if we could do a more in-depth study, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mark Krainenberg. One of the other measures that we have is related to the airport and growth in airport activity, and so let Mark cover that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Mayor and Council. Good morning, Mark Krainenberg, Airport's Director. Glad to continue our discussion on the council's priority to encourage a robust economy as it relates to air service. Air service can be a benchmark on the economic health of a community. So when a community is growing or thriving, there can be more air service. And I'd like to give you an example. A few years ago, we had started recruiting Alaska Airlines to Oklahoma City. And they were very bullish on Oklahoma City and very interested in our market, but it was the relationship that Oklahoma City had with the Boeing Corporation over the last few years that really got them interested, as well as the oil and gas exploration in the state of Alaska and as well as just general tourism in the great Northwest. These are the kinds of things, how well your community is doing is half the story as to how we do when we recruit air service. Air service options also stimulate the economy. I'll give you another example of that. We have three carriers that serve Denver. We have Frontier, we have United, and we have Southwest. So when we offer our citizens more choices to fly, that stimulates that economy. And employments are just one measurement of how we evaluate the impact of our air service. One of the progress indicators that you have with this priority is tracking employments at Will Rogers, so I'd like to define that term for the public. It's an industry term with the airlines that stands for revenue boarding passenger. It's one way we track passenger activity. It's not the total passengers at, at Will Rogers because we also track the deplaning passengers as well. If you look at our recent history, we've had quite an uptick in our employments over the last few years. I will tell you, as director for now over 13 years, typically, we usually see 1% to 1.5% of employment growth. In the last couple of years, it's been rather dramatic and we've had a lot of successes. In this year, calendar year 2019, from January through March, we had 3.4% increase over that same period of 2018. 2017 calendar year was a record year for us, but in calendar year 2018, we even busted that. We had over 4.3 million passengers travel through Will Rogers World Airport. And that's, of course, inplaning and deplaning passengers. There are three primary strategies that we use to promote the growth, employment growth at our airport, certainly our air service development program. We plan for growth with our facilities and we promote the development of airport property. When you talk about air service development, we regularly meet with the airlines. We'll attend at least a couple of air service conferences each year where we will meet with eight to 10 airlines at each conference and we will do a, sort of a report on how the airport is doing. We explore our cost structure with them and we also spend about half that presentation on what's going on in Oklahoma City. That's really what they want to know. We also do targeted presentations for specific service with specific airlines. And then we also keep regular contact with the airlines throughout the year. We work very hard to keep our costs low to the carriers and we have a leading-for results measure where we try to keep our cost per, per plane passenger to more than, no more than 5% increase a year. And we also provide marketing and operational incentives for, for certain desired service. We feel that we have a responsibility to help promote and prop up new air service so that we can get the word out because we want to try to ensure its success as much as possible. If you look at our route map, you can see we've got really good air service. People are often surprised at how our route map covers the United States. Great service to the east and west coast, 28 current non-stop destinations. And with the exception of Boston Logan Airport, we serve every major market in the United States. This is a list of our recent accomplishments that we've had over the last couple of years and there's four ways that we can enhance air service. We can have a new airline such as Frontier, which has come in and added more new cities over their time that they've been here. You can have an airline introduce new markets. You can see we've had several. As far as new enhancements, you can take an airline such as Allegiant and you can expand the summer service to a certain destination with more frequency or more times per week. And then the last way is that an airline can up-gauge its aircraft. In other words, go from a regional jet to more of a, of a larger mainline aircraft. American Airlines did that very dramatically last summer. With regard to air service, there are issues that can negatively impact air service. Let's think about the economy. It's been 10 years, but the 2008, 2009 financial recession, really, we still see some of the effects of that today because the airlines constricted their route networks back then and they haven't brought those yet to 100%. High fuel prices was also an issue during that time period and we saw air service get cut across the country at numerous airports because of that. And of course, if you have a local downturn in your economy, that can be affected also. Operational changes by airlines can affect air service. Airlines are being much more seasonal today than they are when they used to just establish year, year-round routes right from the very beginning. And there have been several mergers, four major mergers in the last few years. So the, the amount of mainline carriers, as we call them, has really shrunk down. We still have a few ongoing efforts to attract air service. This list is dramatically going down. We'd still like to get service and we're talking to a couple of carriers for the New York Laguardia area. We'd like to recruit service into South Florida and two airlines that we've been talking to for several years, but they just haven't made it out this far to the United States as Spirit and JetBlue. With regard to planning for facilities, obviously, you know, we're underway with our terminal expansion program and this is where we're going to have a new consolidated security checkpoint. We're building four new gates, which will be the beginnings of a new East Concourse, ultimately building nine gates when the extra six gates or the other gates, nine gates demand merits. We're taking our existing security checkpoints and turning those into very large meter-and-greeter lobbies for the public to help us in our congestion in the lobby. And just overall, we always try to strive to improve the passenger experience. As far as promoting the development of airport property, probably the best initiative that we have to date is that of Lariat Landing. It's a strategic development program where we're developing about 1,000 acres on the east side of Will Rogers World Airport for aeronautical and non-aeronautical use. It'll have both industrial, commercial, and retail opportunities. It's got great access to the interstates, great infrastructure. We've been validated with our infrastructure to realign and relocate and improve Portland Avenue because that has facilitated quite a bit of development over the last year alone. Three of the major successes, SkyWest Airlines completed their maintenance hangar last October. Very significant. SkyWest flies as a co-chair partner with four of our mainline carriers at Will Rogers. So we'll have regional jets that will fly into Will Rogers, park at the gate late at night. SkyWest comes over, take the, takes those aircraft over to their hangar for overnight maintenance and puts them on the jet bridge for the originators in the morning. FedEx also last fall completed their ground distribution center and sorting facility. There's 80 vans a day that pull out of there in the morning doing deliveries across Oklahoma City and they also have a customer service counter. And of course, the Amazon fulfillment center, they lease 70 acres in Lariat Landing and it's a prototype, just a state-of-the-art and we hope that that will be open later this year. This is a map and just kind of shows you the expansiveness of Lariat Landing. It goes from I-44 and, and goes west to our runways and taxiways airfield system. You can see all the great access that we have to the area from Portland Avenue from the north and south, as well as access from 59th Street, 74th Street, and 89th Street. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So we have a couple of other reports that are on for today. We have the fiscal year budget report through March 31st. And the only thing I would point out on that, and this, that goes through March, but it shows that we're about 33, we have revenues about $33 million in excess of expenditures. Part of that is that we have more of our expenditures planned. We have actually more expenditures than revenues planned in the last quarter of the year. So I don't expect to finish the year at that level, so I just wanted to make sure someone didn't pick that up and go, wow, you know, we're going to have all this. I think we'll add to fund balance, but it won't be at this level. And so I just wanted to point that out. But it does show the revenues are over target and expenditures are under target, which is exactly where we want to be. We also have the sales tax report that's on, and this is the sales tax report for April, so it goes through the next month. And we're about $10 million ahead of target. Sales tax came back, you know, we had, last month was our first decline that we've seen in 22 months in sales tax. We came back with about 4% growth on the April sales tax check, which is good news. Overall, for the year, the underlying growth that we'll see on sales tax is running about 3.7%. So it's right in line with target right now. We do think, in talking with Russell, that we're expecting that the sales tax growth is going to continue to slow. So we are expecting that to slow and going into next year, you'll see when we present the budget that we'll have a lower projection on sales tax for next year and still have the, the risk of recession anyway, whether it actually comes about or not. We do expect a slowing within the economy, so I just wanted to point that out. I mean, then we have our budget transfers report on. There are many ways that we can, after we adopt the budget, that we can move funding around within departments and between departments. And we bring a report back quarterly to the council just to give you an update of the changes that have been made, but mostly are just administrative changes that are approved in the budget process or through the Budget Department or Budget Office. Any questions?
Craig, I have one.
Yes.
You know, each January, I believe, we have a report from Oklahoma City University's Economic Department. When's the next one scheduled? Don't we have one?
Well, you know, we, we actually, we do that once a year, but I think we had mentioned, actually, and I was, I was checking on that, that we had mentioned about bringing Russell back. He does a mid-year update for us internally. And bringing him back maybe sometime in August or towards the end of the summer and letting him come back just to one of our council members and doing a presentation for us. So we, we do have that planned.
You know, I, I wouldn't be opposed if he could squeeze it in to have a brief presentation, not a full one, but a very brief one, perhaps during the month of May, early June, prior to the final adoption of the budget for next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I ask Aubrey McDermott and Kenny Soodle to come in. I know we've made the announcement, I've talked to all of you, but they are our new assistant city managers. We've been through this process. Dennis Clower's retired in February. M.T. retires at the end of May. And I just asked them to come in if they would. Aubrey's been our planning director for the past several years and, yeah. It's kind of after the fact, you're okay, you can sit back down. It's, it's kind of after the fact because of the fact that we've made the announcement, we put out a press release. But Aubrey's been our planning director for several years now and has done a great job for us, leading in planning within the community as well as within the organization, brings great leadership skills to us and I think that will really provide a lot of insight and help to build our, our city management team. Kenny's been in the finance department for his entire career and has been the assistant finance director for seven years, been the interim finance director for the past few years as I moved over here. He's done a great job for us, providing leadership for us and in the organization. He's recognized in his leadership nationally even with, on debt management and finance issues with the Government Finance Officers Association. So both of them, I think, bring great leadership skills to us and great relationships within the organization and within the community. And so I think they'll do a great job for us. Combining with Laura Johnson, who I'm thankful is staying around, she's been in an assistant city manager job for seven years now and I'm really grateful that she's here to help lead us through as well. So together, we will form your city management team. I do want to mention that going through this process was really difficult and it was really difficult in a good way because it was difficult, but the people I was working with primarily were internal candidates. We did have some external candidates and had some good external candidates, but our internal candidates were just so strong with the leadership team that we have that it made it difficult because they're people that I respect, that I consider all of them to be friends. I've worked with them for a long time and so making the decision was difficult, but I think that Kenny and Aubrey just continue to rise to the top and I think they'll do a great job for us in helping to lead our city forward.
Thank you.
That is all I have.
Great job and congratulations. And Claims and Payroll, item 12C can be found online where the agenda is. And we now move to item 13, Citizens to Be Heard, Joy Reardon. We've got a mic for you.
Everybody can hear me.
Well, we want to hear you on TV too, though, so there, at least pull it down.
Okay. I don't know if everybody can hear me or not, but I will be a little bit louder this time.
Have you undermined your name and address and keeping your mask cool?
Joy Reardon, 125 Northwest 9th, Oklahoma City. I bring back a, some, I have been working with several people with the city and embark on, on several things, but the issue is we still have, and I'm open to work with the city council on the ADA issues. We have probably 12 to 13 that I know of that needs to be addressed from sidewalks to events to just other things that need to be, Oklahoma City needs to be brought up to city, to federal code on. The other issue is the scooters, we're still running into problems with those as far as underage, stuff like that. If you read on the actual scooter itself, it says eight, you must be 18 or older. You must have a helmet. There are several other things on there that these young kids and parents or having kids on these scooters, it's going to end up getting someone killed. I hate to say that, but it's going to end up coming to that fact, that someone's going to either get severely injured to the point of where they're going to die. The other thing is, we seem, and I have reported it and I have talked to OCPD, there seems to be two people that think that the east side of the city hall is their personal residence. And from my understanding and talking to one of the officers, I think it was yesterday, that the OCPD doesn't have an ordinance to where they can do anything about this person. And all the Oklahoma City Police Department knows about the person. They've had run-ins with her and everything else and nothing can be done because they can't do anything. with her and everything else, and nothing can be done because they can't do anything.
I know the person you're talking about. I'd be really curious to hear from the hot team, if they've reached out to her, and I'm sure that's probably who's been communicating with her, but also if we can, and I would also assume, just from my brief interactions with her, that she does not recognize that she's homeless, or that she's living outside. But what services through, if we can get an outreach worker from, say, Homeless Alliance or North Care, I know they have some programs.
They've already tried multiple situations. The Action Center says that she refuses to do anything, and she, and she's beginning to become a, two things, nuisance, and with the amount of stuff that she carries around with her and everything, she is actually blocking the city sidewalks. And I've brought this point up before, the fact that you never know what she might have. She's carrying around rotten food, she's carrying around a bunch of things, and it's becoming an actual, a health hazard. On multiple occasions, her stuff has been thrown in the garbage, and within a week to two weeks, she's, it seems like she comes up with same amount of stuff. And I will be at the homeless meeting, because I have several ideas that might help. Okay.
I also would like, I know we spoke last week, I'd like to ask about the scooters. Just, I know that, my assumption is that from the city perspective, there's not much we can do to enforce its personal liability with the company that people are signing on to when they get on the app. But I have noticed, and I know you shared some pictures with me, from where the companies are placing, when they go back out to like, they charge them and then bring them back out to place them. They're putting them in the right-of-way, like blocking sidewalks and things, and I'd be really curious if there's any communication we can have with the scooter companies to make sure that they're not doing that.
We'll follow up on that. I know it's, I'm sorry. That's an issue that, you know, periodically, we want to do that, and we definitely follow up on that.
What's the phrase for the part of the sidewalk where they are allowed to put things? There's like, it was like the something zone?
From what I understand, it's been passed by the City Council, is they're allowed to put them by the bike racks, and the edge of the curb.
I think that was it, yeah, the amenity zone or something.
Yeah. But if, y'all would have to bring up some kind of ordinance to where the police department could actually write tickets, per se.
Well, I think they can.
Enforcing, enforcing some kind of...
They have to, they have to observe it themselves.
Yeah.
And several officers have.
But we can also, if you're placing them in the right-of-way, that is, you know, impeding the path of the sidewalk, we can discuss that with them. We can pick them up, but I think generally, we try to handle it by working through that with them.
I am in the process, over the last week, documenting this stuff, so I do have pictures of the stuff, of them being actually in, and if you go on Facebook, you can see, in other cities, they're actually doing what, the City Council and everything, is doing what they can to get rid of them, because they've become such a nuisance. The city of Oregon, the residents and everything are actually taking them and throwing them in the lake, or in the ocean, to get rid of them.
We're trying not to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Joy. Thank you. We also had John Pettis sign up to speak. And Mr. Pettis, you wrote, "Ask questions." Depending on how quickly I can ascertain what it is you're interested in, I might divert you to a staffer to handle it, but we'll go ahead and start. If you wouldn't mind saying your name and address.
I'll be real short. Mr. Mayor, John Pettis, Member of the Council, 1332 Northeast 54th Street. In today's meeting, the council indicated that there were going to be other charter changes made later on, maybe in 2020. Okay. What will be the process of those charter changes being submitted for the council's consideration? Will it be input from the citizens, or will the council just determine which ones will go before the voters or the people?
Sure, there'd probably be multiple stages of that, and I hear Councilman Stonecye for clicking his mic, because he served on the Charter Change Committee a decade ago. But, you know, there'd be a committee, citizens, maybe also elected officials who would steward that process, then submit them to our consideration, and we'd have to talk about them up here, just like we did today, before we would put them to a vote. And then, of course, the people get the ultimate say on them. Is there anything you'd add to that, Mark?
Just that when we had the committee, Willa had a period of time that she had input from the citizens at large.
Willa Johnson was the chair.
So a citizen can submit a proposed charter change, maybe to the mayor, and then it would go to the...
Yeah, probably to the, yeah, you can give it to me or anybody, and we can get it to the committee, when that time all, when that all happens.
Okay. My last question is, will the charter changes be at the same time of the proposed maps for election?
No, 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 no. This would be probably in the general election of 2020 is what I would be targeting, so November of 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no more citizens to be heard. We did have an item we voted on to go into executive session, so we will handle that, and then we will return.